I work with a lot of department heads here in the city, so that's who I am.
Okay, all right. One of the questions that I have, I was thinking of today is, obviously you have projects that go on in town, gas replacement lines and whatnot. Do you have any lists that are public as far as, so that we have an idea of when and where you'll be working and, you know, on various projects in the city, gas replacement?
I have a list of projects that we're either currently working on or going to be working on. It's not kind of formal, it's just my chicken scratch, but I'm more than happy to see if we have a list like that. Typically, this is what happens. Unless we have emergency work in the city, we have a lot of planned replacement work that we do as a matter of routine. And oftentimes, what we like to do is annually, we ask cities and towns where we serve, where they might be doing a lot of paving work, and we try to coincide a lot of our main replacement work with paving projects the city has. So it's sort of a combination of emergency work that we need to do and then also tying it in with paving projects that the city has. So annually, we get that list and sort of match it up and see where we can work in conjunction with work that you folks are doing. But I do have a list of projects that we are going to be working on for the balance of the year. I don't know if you want me to read some of the streets, or if you just want me to provide a list later on to you folks?
Yeah, if you have a list and you want to provide it later. The reason why I asked that question is because, you know, for example, I've been trying to get, I've been asking the mayor's office to get a certain street my district paved, and the response that I'm getting is, we're waiting for National Grid to replace gas lines. So, you know, I'm just kind of curious as to what you have, you know, in terms of capital improvements and stuff like that.
Sure. Well, as I think you folks know, we've just kind of completed the work on Mechanic Street in the city. But just to list off a few streets that will be working between now and the, like, the moratorium, when that begins around November 15th, West Street. And honestly, I can't tell you, you know, it's probably not the entire street, it's probably a portion of the street, but I'll just list the streets. West Street, Bartlett Street, Central Street, Commercial Drive, really specific to the wastewater treatment plant, Mechanic Street that I just mentioned, from Laurel Street to Whitney Street, Cloverleaf and the surrounding streets, Harlan, Crystal, and Priest Street. Actually, Priest Street, we're going to do some repair work. That's kind of related to the park area, where we've had some concerns from residents that walk that park. We're actually going to make a final repair on that on Wednesday night.
Okay.
But I'll get a formal list and forward it to you folks.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be great. So I'm good, Councilor Marchand?
Thank you. Scott, first of all, my name is Rick Marchand. I'm the Ward Five Councillor on the west side. Thank you very much for coming down this evening. I appreciate it. I want to let the councillors know that the office had actually sent out a communication to me probably three weeks ago to meet on a matter that I was concerned with on Nelson Street and Damasa Drive area. And so they were really good to react to that. They were going to have a neighborhood meeting, but we had already taken a vote down here to bring them down here to take a look at the big picture, not just that isolated issue. The other part, too, was in consideration of the neighborhood, I might have been able to put together two or three people to attend that meeting where everyone's been concerned in that entire neighborhood regarding the gas leak. So thank you for being here, I appreciate it. To build on the council president's question to begin with, you're on the west side right now, and you're doing a great job, good supervision with the police department, but it was kind of a shock to the neighborhood when all of a sudden the streets just shut down. There isn't a complaint from Soup Dog, the hot dog guy who sets up on the corner of Vine Street in Merrim. He's having a windfall. So he asked if he could just leave the cones there forever, but I told him today it wasn't going to happen. But in the meantime, it does, you know, create quite a disturbance. And I, for one, as a ward councillor especially, would be appreciative if you did share a list with us through the city clerk where all of a sudden there is a projected timeline that you're going to be working on a street, you know, in the future one, so we can at least, when we go around and meet with the people, we have a chance to chat with them. They call us, you know, they'll call the mayor's office, they'll call us, what's going on, how long is this going to take, why are they doing it? So, you know, to have kind of the basic information and a projected timeline on the construction, the completion would be very much appreciated.
May I just make a point or ask you a question? So you talk about police detail issues. You talking like recently where Nelson Street's been closed down?
No, I'm shooting over to West Street over here. The traffic flow's been excellent with the supervision. Yeah, Nelson Street, no complaints on that. Outside of the lights, but that's not your deal, down on North Main Street. Second thing is the light replacement. We had a pole that was taken out by a fire truck. It was a problem at the corner of West Street and Orchard Street specifically, on the west side, at the intersection, right at the corner. The pole was jackknifed, and what happened was you guys went up, you put up a brand-new pole immediately. That pole's still there, you know, and one of the problems we're having is, you know, that intersection has been deemed one of the most dangerous intersections in the city of Lemonster. The former Ward, Councilor Lodge, Councilor Savitelli would address that all the time. And there's been some consideration for an initiative to resolve that area to begin with, but what happened is there's no light there. And when I contacted the mayor's office, you know, there was a concern whether the light even existed, because no one had instituted memory on that particular thing, so we need to get the light up there, you know, as soon as we can. It's a very, very dangerous intersection, and it's the only, there's a lot of people from the neighborhood, believe it or not, that actually walk to the senior center, and the veteran center's right there as well. So there's a lot of calling hours, there's three funeral homes. So if that can be a priority in Ward Five, I would deeply appreciate that.
I am aware of that issue, by the way, and the information that I had gotten back from the mayor's office is they specifically said it was Pole Nine, that the street light wasn't working. And we've actually made arrangements to have one of our troublemen, that's one of our one-person crews that work, well, 24/7, but they've gone out twice at night to repair the street light. And to your point, the problem was, there's no street light there.
It's gone now.
And so, but that was the confusion, because what was told to me is repair the street light at Pole Nine, and I've kind of parroted back twice. Well, we have no street light there, is...
Yeah, I understand that.
If you, and so I just, I asked the mayor's office just for clarification, but if it's a light, it's a pole right in the corner of those two streets, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I'll just verify in our street light records where we have a street light in our records and try to get it installed as soon as possible.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. The next thing, I think it's a question that a lot of us probably have, is the maintenance effort. What happens is, I'm up on the corner of Abbott Avenue and Hall Street Extension, and there's a light that's been flickering, it's going out, calls have been made, calls have been made. It just kind of doesn't get repaired. So I could name for you right now a dozen spots that I've had, you know, been spoken with, showed, et cetera, that, you know, so the protocol normally is we go through, you know, we're supposed to go through the mayor's office, but you've offered something that we did have in the past. Councilor Lodge Lanceani was the master connecting with Mass Electric and then National Grid, making a phone call, getting the light fixed. So if you could leave us with that quick fix number to call, I think if it's protocol for you would be appreciated, unless it came from, if you want us to go through the mayor, that's fine, if you want us to go through the clerk, that's fine. It happens once in a while, but it would be nice to be able to expedite it as quickly as we can.
I'm actually the quick fix phone number, if you'd like. And the arrangement that I have with the mayor's office is they have been reporting street light outages or issues directly to me, and I've...
That's great.
Been able to get work requests created and the light's repaired. So however you folks want to provide it through the mayor's office, I'd be happy to make sure we address those issues.
They're good about that. They've been fine, you know, but in the meantime, if we had that number two, it'd be great. Okay?
Okay, sure.
Shadow Lawn Drive, a mess. I mean, I have a picture of it, but it was a mess. And there was a gentleman who lived on the corner that passed away this past fall, Mr. Michaels. I know most of you in here knew him, Bill Michaels. And his wife lives there, and the son's taking care of her. And this guy, I think, was in competition with, you know, the most beautiful yacht in the world. He was just amazing. He kept that place pristine, you know, and what happened was National Grid had to do some work over there, and Shadow Lawn looks terrible. I mean, it looks like it needs a resurfacing. That's something that we should talk about as well. But on the corner, there was a section that was lawn that was probably eight feet deep by at least 16 feet, and crushed stone was put in lieu of loom. So with that being said, the homeowner went out, I believe, and took care of it. So it's now, there's loom down there, he's seeded, he's watering it. Do you guys have any kind of a maintenance thing? Besides, you did a good cleanup there from debris and everything, but when it came down to being able to repair those type of things, what's the protocol, policy on that?
Yeah, just so you folks are aware, I've been talking to our gas operations supervisor about Shadow Lawn. He's taken a couple trips out there, and I actually drove by there tonight before getting to this meeting.
Yeah, I did also.
And I think I know exactly where you're talking about, the corner of Merrimab.
That's it.
But the protocol is, we had a contractor that did that work, and interestingly, I was in a meeting this afternoon, and the contractor came in from NewCo, that's the company that we hired. And so anytime that we disturb an area of someone's lawn, in this particular case, we'd probably say it's in the city taking, where we did some digging.
Yeah, it was.
And our protocol is to loom and reseed. And I looked at it tonight, it has been loomed and reseeded. And so that is really our protocol, to always clean it up like that. And so, of course, I saw it only the first time tonight, so I don't have recollection if they filled it in with stone, like you said, but at least I saw it tonight.
I can show you the photograph afterward. And I'm curious, because the resident was not home when I went up, and I wanted to ask him if you guys took care of that, the subcontractor, did he? So it's good that it's resolved, it's just a question of, you know, cleaning up the situation. You know, you probably were on city property all the way through, and you were on city property when you had to disturb that hostile of land that they've been maintaining as good citizens, but at the same time, we want to make sure we try to put it back to what it was. The last piece that I have is dealing with Damasa. That's been a nightmare for you.
Damasa, which is...
I'm sorry, Nelson Street.
Okay.
You know, we have documented six formal 911 calls where fire apparatus had to show up, had to babysit it, had to contact National Grid, and then National Grid arrived on scene. You probably, I'm sure you have more than that. But what happened was, I want you to, you know, you know the area I'm talking about, and I realize a repair's been made, okay, but what happened was you have a house that's right on the corner, and there's a gas odor that's pretty significant. And on a night like this, when the screen's open, so we all believe, and I'm sure you do, that that's not acceptable. So the problem is, understanding how busy you are, you're all over town right now, which is great, but when you have a leak in that nature that's becoming a serious nuisance and concern of the neighborhood, you know, do you have any way that you can deal with it a little sooner than later?
And just to fill you folks in, there's actually been six, I don't know the exact number, but somewhere between six and eight, what we consider grade-three leaks on Nelson Street. All of them have been repaired. Just so you understand, a grade-three leak, while I understand any residence's concern when they smell gas, we have three gradings for leaks, basically. Grade one, which is an immediate danger that needs immediate repair. Grade two means no concern, no danger, but needs to be repaired as soon as possible. And a grade-three leak is, National Grid is aware of it and needs to have, needs to monitor it routinely, but no repair is required unless the grading of the leak changes. I will tell you that in spite of the odor, and I'm respectful of the fact that folks have some concerns, every leak on Nelson Street has been listed or classified as a grade-three leak. So those have all been repaired. I think I can, a little bit of good news story is, I know the city's going to be repaving the road and putting sidewalks in there. We're going to replace all the gas main and all the services on Nelson Street by the end of October.
That's good to know.
So that work is coming soon.
Because the front office has told me that the delay is because of National Grid not being able to get to it. So what's happened is if you go up to the upper portion of Damasa Drive, it's a shoe, it's a horseshoe type of a road, you can see that the original coat in the paving project has worn right down to the old coat. So I mean, and what's happening is the sidewalks, they can't do the sidewalks, you know, we have all kinds of cuts into the banking. The subcontractor can't finish their contract with the city, they've stalled it now till October. If you're saying October, the neighbors can live with that if they know what that timeline is. The problem is, if you're saying October, I don't know how much time we have to do what we have to do as a city in order to finish the coat and also put in sidewalks.
I don't want to put Dave Smith, who's here from the DPW, on the spot. I understand, Jeff Johnson, our gas supervisor, talked to the DPW. I think they're, you know, beginning their replacement project sometime in October. Does that sound right to you?
That project should be done by, excuse me, October.
So it's not starting in October, it'll be done by October. Thanks, Dave, it's perfect. Again, it's just a communication piece. You know, your grading still, I mean, you teach us when we smell gas to make the call. So you're telling us that those gas leaks aren't as serious as what we thought they were, but...
But the folks smell gas, so it's a concern. We understand.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much for coming down tonight, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Certainly.
Councilor Nichol?
Thanks. You mentioned Mechanic Street being done. Are you saying that all those poles and stuff are all set?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was specifically talking about the gas work. No, it's ongoing, the pole work.
I was going to say, there's no way you're even close to done. I didn't want people to misunderstand that if you're watching TV tonight, looking at all the poles from the way...
I'm glad you clarified. I was specifically referring to the gas work. So yes, we're in earnest working on the electric portion of that now.
All right. Now, the other thing is, usually if you relocate a pole, I think if it's three feet or under, you don't have to go through a process.
That's correct.
We've got, I don't know, how many poles? Thirty, probably, anyway. And I haven't seen anything come through the city council. Is that all covered because it's a state project and they're overseeing it? What happens in that case?
I guess I can only tell you, I don't know specifically, but that three-foot rule does hold where we do not need a pole petition from any cities and towns when we set within three feet of existing pole. That's probably the best answer I can give you.
But these poles are going in the opposite side of the street.
Then if that's the case, then I would say that if they're entirely different locations than where they currently are, then we do need pole petitions. And it sounds like you folks haven't heard...
If that's the case, you're going to have a lot of petitions to put in.
I will look into that and report back to you folks.
Okay, thank you.
I'll set, Councilor Nichol?
I am.
Does anybody else have any questions? Council Freedom?
Hi.
Good evening.
Tomorrow, it's expected that the municipal modernization bill will be signed, and it has quite a bit of an effect on the electric utilities. How do you propose to handle the double pole issue? Do you have something in the works already? Because that's a major problem throughout this city as well.
Yeah. What I probably, I had a recent conversation with Mr. Lanceani. Double poles are a concern in every city and town, and I think that...
That's why I got into the modernization bill.
Right, understood. I think the best thing to do, which I'm going to confess, I've been in this role handling the city account for three years, a little over three years now. And I personally have not had a discussion with, and I apologize if anyone would disagree, but I personally have not been involved in a discussion with any city official on concerns about double poles. That doesn't mean that we're not working on them, that just means that I haven't specifically heard about concerns with double poles. And so, one of the things I said to Mr. Lanceani, and I, by the way, I brought some double pole records, just so you folks know, and truthfully, and just so folks know, National Grid is the setting party. They join own poles, and almost every pole in the city is joined on by Verizon and National Grid. But National Grid is the pole-setting custodian in the city of Lemonster. So when a new pole gets set, wires get transferred from the top down, so National Grid's at the top, and the next thing is fire alarm cable if there is any, and then cable, and then telephone, in that order. So that each party has to transfer in that particular order. And so currently, we've done a number of pole removals, double pole removals in the city earlier this year, but I will tell you folks that per our records, there are 42 poles right now ready in the city for National Grid to pull. And I will work in earnest with our operations group to make sure that we pull those as quickly as possible. So that's one thing. I think there are about 160 Verizon transfers required, and cable also, but about 163, actually, by my records, transfers that Verizon needs to do. And since they would be the last step on the pole, that would, in essence, if they transferred 163, we'd have 163 poles to remove at this point in time, or when that work is completed. So right now, currently, 42 poles could be removed by National Grid, so I will work on those. And one of the things I said to Mr. Lanceani, if there are particular poles that are most problematic in the city, that folks want to pass on to me, I will try to address those, even if other parties are attached to them. If there are particular poles that are problematic, I will try to endeavor to get those removed as quickly as possible. Otherwise, I can work on the list of the 42 that I know we can pull, and then of the remaining ones where other folks are attached. If you folks want to make me aware of them, or someone in the mayor's office, we'll endeavor to speed those along with the other utilities so that we can remove those.
In all due respect, I'm not quite sure we would have to contact you and say that the double pole is a problem.
No, I understand.
I mean, if you're doing the work and you know you put up another pole, there's got to be someone responsible for that. And once it gets to two years, three years, four years, that it's been a double pole and it looks horrible, and it's a concern, there shouldn't have to be conversations with the city officials.
No, no, I understand. I wasn't necessarily implying, I'm just saying, if there's, right, if there's any that are problematic, that, you know, just are really in a dangerous spot that you're aware of, that you'd want us to move up the list, that's, I was just implying that we could try to work on those. But you're absolutely right, there's a joint database that all utilities use, that's how we kind of communicate with each other. And so it's on the utilities, in essence, to progress poles for removal. When new poles get set, to progress the old poles towards, you know, removing their equipment and removing poles as quickly as possible. So that is an ongoing thing. I would be lying if I said to you that, you know, it's always a top priority, it's just that oftentimes, other work becomes, supersedes it, whether it's new customer hookups or emergency work, it's oftentimes supersedes it. And I don't mean that in a way that we don't make it a priority, but, because I deal with a number of cities and towns, and double poles are a priority everywhere. So I just endeavor to try to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our municipalities with pole removals, so...
And I do agree with you, it's not just Lemonster. I sit on the state level, and it's, that's why I got into that, you know, to have to push it to legislation if you're able to find you, if you don't take them down. You know, so, you know, I appreciate the fact that it's going to be moving along a little bit, or that there'll be an ability to get some money for that process if that's not the case. No, thank you.
Certainly.
Okay. Is there anybody else? No, I guess we're all set. Thank you very much, Scott, for coming down. Appreciate it.
Nice job, thank you.
Nice job, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, we're certainly having a hearing and if they have a right to read a letter into the records, so you may proceed.
Okay. Would you like to read the letter into the record?
Yes, please. Dear Council President, regarding Doctor's Orders Health Massachusetts, referring to as DOHM, request for interview. DOHM, in conjunction with Brian Riley of Copeland and Page, have had an opportunity to review the facts regarding our previous request for an investigation of violations by both the Ways and Means and Legal Affairs Subcommittee's relative to Resolution 105 CMR 725, establishment of a protocol to issue letters of support or non-opposition for registered marijuana dispensaries or cultivation sites. As a reminder, the City Council set forth specific guidelines that included a set of criteria in order to qualify for such letters, including a deadline for submission of documents, legally binding leases and zoning criteria. DOHM maintained that mistakes were made along the way relative to leases, submission, due dates, and zoning. Our intent is not to be punitive to the other applicants, but to demonstrate to the council that there were flaws in the process. The selection of a long-term partner for the city will have major impacts on economic development and jobs, and the council must be assured that they have selected the right company. There was the finding of Copeland and Page in an email dated eight, five, sixteen. Feckley, Marshawn, Al Dobroski, Bodanza copied, that special accommodation was given to some applicants. Specifically, that Middlesex Integrative Medicine, MIM, was able to submit documents that did not meet the council's guidelines and submit documents after that due date. According to Mr. Riley, quotation, "I am informed that MIM's filings on June ninth deadline included a letter of intent signed by MIM and the property owner, as well as an unsigned copy of the proposed lease. On June twenty-sixth, MIM filed a signed copy of the same lease. In my opinion, it was neither prohibited nor unreasonable for the two committees to decide to accept MIM's application in this manner, and I rely further, and I rely further on my opinion of July eighteenth, two thousand sixteen," end quote. I would respectfully remind the council that during this discussion of Resolution 105 CMR 725, that it was very specific about signed leases and not letters of intent, and that all documents had to be submitted by June ninth. This was later confirmed in a call to the Chairman of Legal Affairs Committee, Counselor Dobroski, that letters of intent were not acceptable. As DOHM has maintained since the Ways and Means and Legal Affairs Subcommittee's meeting, mistakes were made relative to the council's own resolution. Mr. Riley maintains that MIM zoning is appropriate, to which we disagree and would encourage the city zoning inspector to visit the property. We have visited the property and contend that the building does not conform to the zoning code. Mr. Riley also believes that the leases of the other applicants were acceptable to meet the council's requirements. I would strongly encourage council members who have experience with leases to review those of all applicants. DOHM maintains that leases of other applicants were submitted to get over the bar of minimum criteria and are not serious efforts at commercial leases. More importantly, there is a didactic value in the competency and seriousness of effort that is demonstrated in the lease and these lease documents. Mr. Riley goes on to state, quotation, "Whether to provide a letter of support or non-opposition is a discretionary decision for any community, and the City Council could approve all applicants, refuse all applicants, or something in between. It will be up to the council and/or two committees whether to reconsider DO Health's application." DOH, end quote. DOHM would ask that, given the mistakes in the process, that we be allowed to be interviewed for one of the dispensary and cultivation letters. This process was intended to find the best long-term partner for the city, but we believe it had the opposite effect. The decision of which company to partner with will have major impacts on both jobs and revenue for the city for many years. Our single investment in Lumberster represents a larger commitment than any of the other applicants combined with both jobs and dollars. If after the interview, if after the interview process, the council feels that we are not the best fit, we will walk away knowing that at least the community had an opportunity to hear what we had to offer. Sincerely, Mackie Barch, DOL Massachusetts LLC.
Can we have a copy of that letter?
Yes.
So the, we will continue the hearing till August twenty-second at six-thirty. Counsel Bodanza.
Just, just for the record, I'm going to object to the continuation of this hearing. I, I really don't, I see no point to it. They don't have a letter of non-opposition or support. This special permit can go nowhere without that. If, in fact, the investigative process that they've started ultimately leads to a issuance of a letter of support or non-opposition, they can always file another petition for a special permit. Sort of putting the cart before the horse here. This is just be, they can continue to investigate, do what they need to do with respect to the allegations and concerns that they've brought up. And if they're fortunate enough to result in a reshuffling of this process for some reason or other, there's a, there's an outlet for them to come back with a petition for another special permit. I see no purpose for this piece of, for this special, for this petition to be before us. And, and that's why I brought the issue up about the table, because I, as far as I'm concerned, this really doesn't have a place on our agenda at this juncture.
Counsel Frida, may I speak?
Well, in fairness, Counselor, they questioned our protocol, they questioned our process. And I think they have a right to understand whether there is, the last line states at all. If they're wrong, they'll walk away knowing that they had an opportunity in the community. They're wrong, they're wrong. Past practice has been the, the Chair of the Subcommittee sets the date or the continuation. The council wants to change that tonight and have an individual vote, I'm fine. I don't have a position one way or the other. But I'm working in a, in a position of, of filling in for the Chair of the Committee, and this has been past practice. So if we want to change past practice, then so be it. I don't, I don't.
I just, I think we're beating a dead horse. I mean, in, in essence, this permit was filed before they had a letter of non-opposition. They have to have, they gotta go a long way before this special permit could be acted upon. Even if they got a letter of support or non-opposition, they still have to get a license before they can come back here with a special permit. Now, I don't begrudge them looking into what they're looking into. That's up to them, that's their prerogative, that's their right. I don't have a problem with it. But this is not doing anything to maintain their position. It's not helping them, it's not helping anybody. It's, it's surplus on our calendar is what it is, in my opinion, but.
And we have, we have a Subcommittee meeting on Wednesday night to discuss the others that are vying for the position, vying for the, the letter of non-opposition. I don't understand what the problem is, giving them two more weeks to continue their conversations with the city solicitor. I mean, if they feel that they've been wrong, I think they have an opportunity. And I just feel that it's not going to hurt us to wait two more weeks. Not, we're not beating a dead horse. If they are, it, it's a two-week process, and I don't think it's going to be a big deal to wait two weeks and give them the opportunity. We're wrong, if they're wrong, they're going to find out soon enough.
What if, what if we voted up to take it off the table at the end of the meeting? What happens then? How, how do we, how, I don't understand how we move forward on a petition that essentially, at this point, didn't.
Well, however they move forward since April fourth is, is a question. It's been continued a number of times. Is there, is there a concern about a constructive permit? That could be a possibility.
That was my next, that was my next point.
Yeah, well, and that's why I think it's important to allow the process to go the next two weeks and let, let the attorneys iron it out.
May, may I please interject, since we seem to be having a discussion on this? Is that okay? Counsel Frida, if I could chime in?
Patrick, could you use your microphone?
I'm sorry. May I chime in? Please, respectfully, I'll keep it brief. So we submitted the special permit prior to there even being an understanding of who was going to issue the letter of support or non-opposition, this council or the mayor?
That's right.
So we asked, the, the council asked us to continue and then asked us to continue again, and so we patiently waited. We're still of the opinion that you can't apply rules to our application that were adopted after the date of the filing of our application, and we haven't gotten a response to that. But we're really trying to work with the city to have our chance to sit here at this table with Doctor's Orders and simply present. And if the council doesn't select us after that presentation, then that's fine. At least we had our moment to present to this council the four million dollar investment that they want to make in the city and the fifty jobs that they want to create in the city. If there was any other industry coming down here, plastics, manufacturing, the council would be open arms. But instead, we're getting bounced around and we're just, we don't understand why our petition for the letter of support or non-opposition was given leave to withdraw when we had raised questions about it the week prior. No one responded to us and, and it was given, you know, we knew this discussion was going on. All we want is the chance for an interview. We feel that there was mistakes made along the way, right, wrong, whatever, it's all behind us. This was put on the table to allow the determination of who was writing the letter. It was supposed to come back off the table on July eleventh. I specifically remember that whole discussion back in April. Hey, we'll put this on the table until we decide who's writing the letter, then we'll take it back off the table. So we were supposed to be back off the table. We really feel that we shouldn't have been given leave to withdraw. All we're asking is a chance to interview and present our case, and if we fail, we fail. But we're not even given the opportunity. I think we can all admit that mistakes were made along the way. Let's not continue to make them. Let's give these people an opportunity to present to the city their benefit and then let it go from there. That's all we're asking.
So if I, so if I understand this correctly, what Mr. McCarty is saying is that this special permit application is not subject to the letter of opposition or support because it was filed before that process was created.
Right.
And therefore, that's his, that's one, one, one of his arguments. And the other argument is, in the meantime, while we put that on the shelf, we'll see if we can get an interview and get back into this horse race. I, I see, I, I see that as particularly troublesome. To suggest, to come down here and suggest to us that, by the way, we'd like to get back in the horse race because we're good players, but at the same time suggest to us, we're not really subject to your rules because we filed our special permit application before there was a process in place to issue the letter of non-opposition or support. I've got a big problem with that.
Because that was Mr. McCarty's suggestion, doesn't mean that's what we're going to follow. But I want the city solicitor to tell us that, and I want the continuation of the conversation between both attorneys and have that said through them. I don't, if there was a flaw because they submitted it before the process, before we had a protocol, before they knew we were going to issue the letters and not the mayor's office, I think, I think we all need to know that. That's the only position I'm coming from at this point.
I, I, I have no difficulty whatsoever with the fact that they filed this special permit application before there was a protocol for letters to be issued. I don't care about that because I don't think it's. But I'm not going to let this petition kick around so that they could, they can kick sandback in our face because they happened to file their letter before the letters of protocol or the protocol for letters of non-opposition or support was filed. That's a problem for me. And on top of that, we have an issue that our city solicitor has already highlighted relative to the constructive grant problem. So we got two really good, significant cogent reasons to make this go away, in my opinion.
Well, constructive grant process isn't, isn't going to be an issue if they agree to, to continue the hearing.
Well, but they're.
If both sides agree to continue the hearing, it's not, it's not.
With all due respect, Counselor, I understand that, but at the same time, they're telling us that that may be all for naught because they have some kind of grandfathering by having filed their special permit application before the protocol was established. That, those two things coupled really develop a, a problem for me. And to me, it's much cleaner, if, if they happen to get a letter of support down the road by some machination, then they can always file another application for a special permit. They need to get a couple of things done before they could do that anyway. So as far as I'm concerned, it would be much cleaner for us as a city, as a city council, to, to give this leave to withdraw this evening.
I disagree with that position. I don't think two weeks from now is going to hurt anything. And we're going to go around in circles here, and this is a public hearing, it's not a debate. Mr. Counsel President.
Yeah, I just want to go on record to, you know, as saying that I object to, I object to continuing the hearing. I, there is nothing that Copeland and Page has, has said in writing. We, I've given them a list of all the concerns they had. Copeland and Page has had no concern whatsoever. They've made no concern to me, you know, with the process that we have been, been following. And, you know, quite frankly, this hearing is for a special permit, and we're talking about a letter of non-opposition, which this council has already spoken about. We've already given it leave to withdraw, so I just want to go on, on record saying that I'm not in favor of continuing the public hearing either.
Well, that's, that's fine. If we're going to, if we're going to go in another direction, that's, that's well and good. I mean, it's been past practice of the chair sets the, sets the policy, and that's what you want to do and go beyond that? Change it tonight? Go right ahead. You're the president, you can do that.
You, you may set the policy. I'm just stating at the public hearing what, how I feel. That's all.
And you're the president of the council, so you have every opportunity to, to say no. I mean, I think there were other things mentioned in, in that letter to us that I think raised some questions, and I'm not quite sure that all the answers have been given us. And it's a confidential letter, so we can't have that discussion. So we'll leave it with that. The proposal will be to continue it, and if, if it's objected to, that's, that's my position as the Chair of the Committee midway through this process.
So I'd just like to make one comment as the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee. Mr. McCarty indicated that he feels as though they've been bounced around. Mr. McCarty and his client have been given every opportunity along with all of the other applicants to go through the rubric, to have all of the information that was given to us reviewed. We did not bounce them around, and my personal opinion about the letter that was read, read into the record. Smoke and mirrors, it's muddying the waters, it's taking up way too much of our time. The petition for the letter of non-support has been withdrawn, and I too would be very vehemently strongly against continuing the hearing.
That's fine. My recommendation will be that we continue the hearing till August twenty-second, and when it comes up on the agenda, if everybody wants to vote it down, that'll be their prerogative. August twenty-second at six-thirty, Mr. McCarty.
Just, just one point, how are we going to protect ourselves with respect to the constructive grant?
How are we going to what?
Protect ourselves with respect to the constructive grant.
Because we're going to have a letter signed by them.
Do we, do we have that letter now?
I believe the clerk prepared one, depending on what our position was going to be.
Counsel Frida, finally.
By virtue of, so it's both sides, and it can be done by email, as long as there's an agreement on their part and they're requesting the continuation, which is what I understood was happening here tonight. So we won't be subject to, to that.
I would, I would like to see that done at a minimum before we do anything procedurally. I would like to see.
I believe the wording's done. You want them to go outside and sign it and bring it back in?
I would like to see that.
That's.
Counsel Frida, if I may too, there's another member of your committee here. I'd like to see him weigh in on his position as well.
Okay. I don't have a problem with this. What I'm doing is going by past practice, it has always been done. And at midstream, the Chair of this committee had a conflict. And if you look at some of these comments from our attorney, they were, they, some of the emails that went back and forth went to certain members of the committee, and I never saw them till tonight, five minutes ago. So I have no issue. Counsel Marshan.
If I may?
Sure.
Thank you. Sorry, I respect your position on that. The, the concern that I have is that I will agree that the application came in for a special permit before we had a protocol on how to deal with all of this. So that's a fact. And, you know, I, I think that I'm in a position where I feel that we should give the petitioner on this leave to withdraw without prejudice. The rationale is this, I don't want to punish them for the position they're in. We want to protect the integrity of the position. And the, and the fact of the matter is, if we as a council do not have enough votes to move, push forward with this, then the applicants in a situation where they are denied a special permit, so they can't come back to the council for two years, I believe, or even for a special permit on the same concept. So what would happen is, if we in the process happen to not be comfortable with the current applicant, and there's a glitch, and we disqualify that applicant, then what that would mean potentially to this applicant is that they couldn't resubmit an application because of the rules of special permitting. We couldn't, they have to comply with the two-year process. So what would happen is, if they're in a situation where we deny them that, now they'd have an opportunity to come back, but we can't even hear them because they have to wait for two years. So do I, do I know if that's a fact? No, I don't. But at the same time, it gives them an opportunity that if, you know, like I said, I'm not going to restate it. But I think in all fairness, if it appears as though that there's not enough support for this, for them to be able to move forward with this, let's give them the courtesy to be able to move in a different direction and they can come back and, and potentially in their future, if we have a problem with the other applicant, and open it up again. So just food for thought.
I, I've got an additional point. This same exact thing happened with Attorney Campabasso's petition. You might recall from our history with this that Attorney Campabasso filed a special permit application on behalf of his client before the letter of protocol was established as well. And it was pointed out really early on at that informational meeting upstairs, when Attorney Goldrosen was here, that our ordinance required not only a letter of support or non-opposition, but required a license from the state. And Attorney Campabasso withdrew his application for a special permit with, with leave, with leave to withdraw, which is exactly what Counsel Marshan is suggesting.
I just want to leave the door open for you guys.
I appreciate that.
Does it make sense?
My recollection is the other application withdrew because he was within two hundred feet of a residential zone.
So it's part of it.
I think it's a little apples and oranges there.
If I may, if I still have a floor, ma'am, if I may? So, you know, if you guys are in a situation where potentially, you know, there might be another round coming, and what happens is you pick up the pieces and you move ahead with that. Does that make sense? Because basically, you know, you, you're right now, you see the situation we're in.
I, I.
You know, you know how we feel about it, and we're all in the same quagmire, trying to deal with it the best we can.
Right.
But at the same time, I don't want to see you guys in a situation where we, you know, deny the special permit and then you're just stuck. You can't even apply for two years.
Yeah.
But I mean, I think, as a member, as a second member of Legal Affairs,
I, I.
I would feel comfortable if you guys could give us your position on that,
Yeah.
if it makes any sense. If you want to push the vote, then that's going to hap, that potentially could happen later on this evening.
Right. I, I understand. Unfortunately, I don't personally have that authority. So can we go through with the continuation to the twenty-second and we'll make the decision at that evening? I'm happy to sign whatever Counsel Bodanza feels comfortable with me signing, that it's not a constructive approval. Let me consult with the guys in Colorado and, and get back to you.
As a second member of the committee, I have no problem with that.
With what?
With, with that request. But at the end of the day, we have to deal with this.
Yeah.
Yep. I, I think that we have a definitive, you know, if we, if you could entertain that and we have a definitive answer one way or another on the twenty-second, I'll certainly talk to them in the meantime, come back to you and either decide to steam the head for a vote or leave to withdraw without prejudice, but I don't have that authority to personally make that decision.
Well, why don't we have them offer their protection regarding the constructive grant before we do anything? Before we get any definitive.
Well, I think that's a.
I think the clerk has that for me.
I think that probably stuff.
I think that was pretty clear. I would never have suggested this and put us in a position to, to be in jeopardy with a constructive grant. That I never would have done. I know a little more than that.
What I have here is just something that you would sign saying that.
Right.
We're in agreement, but Mackie Barch is not here to sign. So I would have to email to him tomorrow.
Well, I would have to depend.
I can sign that as their agent.
Because that was the original intent was, it was their request for the continuation, not mine. It was theirs, so I believe he has the authority. He's down here for the, for the extension.
Yes.
The request is attached.
Pat, this isn't easy for any of us. We understand the situation we're in, and believe me, you know, you're a great guy. You do great work. Your family's awesome.
Thank you.
And it's, it's, we try to put the blinders on and look at process and protocol and what's coming and what's not.
I understand.
You know, but, but what's happening is, if we're talking football, you and I right now. Okay, this special permit puts you guys in the red zone.
Yeah.
And you haven't even got the kickoff yet.
I hear you. And, and we said that, and Counsel, uh, sorry, can't speak tonight. Counsel Bodanza and I said that from day one. It's a chicken and the egg scenario. You need the letter to go to the state to get a license, you know?
Yeah.
And there was no protocol for that, and what I, what I meant.
From the state to us.
What I intended by my saying that we continue to continue is that we had the go-along-to-get-along mentality. Okay, we don't know how to handle this, we'll continue for a couple rounds. It wasn't meant to say, hey, too bad none of this applies. It was, we've been trying to be cooperative along the way, and we're just trying to work through this together. And all they really want is their five minutes of fame at this table to present their background.
Okay, I think, I think we're, I think we're good as far as discussion. This is.
Yeah, I, it's, I got to start the meeting, so will you?
Well, it's going to take two more seconds. We're late anyway at this point.
So just the.
All right, so the, the meeting is continued to August twenty-second, six-thirty, the continuation of the hearing.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. At this time, the regular meeting of the City Council for August eighth of two thousand sixteen will now come to order. Will you all please stand and join me for a salute to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will now take a roll call of the honorable members of the City Council, beginning with Counsel Frida.
Yeah, yeah.
Counsel Dobroski.
I'm present.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Counsel Feckley.
Present.
Counsel Bodanza.
Present.
Counsel Lantiani.
Present.
Counsel Nicolle.
Present.
Counsel Marshan.
Present.
And I am present. There are nine, all nine members present this evening. Does the Chairman of Records have any records to approve this evening, Mr. Vice President?
Yes, Mr. President, I have records of July eleventh. Have gone through them, find them in order, recommend they be placed in file.
Okay, so the records of July eleventh of two thousand sixteen will, will be placed on file. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
Motion for recess.
Okay, and at this point, I'll have a motion for a recess. Do I hear a second? Okay, the council now stands in recess so that we can now hold a public forum. We're now going to hold a public forum. The public forum is to allow any person in the audience to speak on any matter listed on the council agenda. The members of the City Council will not be answering any questions. What will be listening to, the opinions expressed by the speaker. Please limit your comments to two minutes or less. The following people have signed up to speak at the public forum. Pat Scorzelli, will you please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record?
Good evening. Pat Scorzelli, Seventy-Eight Maple Avenue, Lemnster, Mass. Actually, this will be brief. I want to thank the council for all of the courtesy they extended us during the interview process for Prime Wellness Center. Time is of the essence, and as we all just discussed, I guess we have a few things to go over, but I'm confident we've all taken the right track and we're hopeful, because there are time limits. You're given basically a year from the time we file with the state to get everything done, so it's important for everybody's sake that, that we do things in a timely manner and that, that we get this done. So again, thank you, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much, Pat. There is nobody else signed up at this time, so I will ask, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak at the public forum? Please step to the mic and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Andrew Rome, twenty-five Shadow Lawn Drive. I'm before you tonight seeking a permit for a pool table for Classics Pub at two eighty-five Central Street. I'd just like to also add, this has been a three-month process for a business that has been a business fifteen years to get a pool table license through the city. Not only did it cost me a hundred and eighty-nine dollars to notify sixteen of Butters, I already have a liquor license, I have an entertainment license, I have a jukebox license, and I had to spend another hundred and eighty-nine dollars to notify Butters as well. I'm not sure why the City Council wants to deal with pool table permits. When the License Board handles amusement devices, they handle liquor licenses, jukebox licenses, and everything else, there's no reason why the City Council should be bothered with pool tables when it belongs in the License Commission. Not only did I have to come before the City Council, the City Council then in its wisdom, who has sent it to the License Board. And, and the question I have is, if the City Council is going to take jurisdiction for it, then they should go through the process with it. If they're not, then give it to the License Commission where it belongs and streamline the process and make it much easier. Three months for a fifteen-year business for a pool table in our supposedly business-friendly community. Thank you.
Andy, years ago, they wouldn't take it. We tried to give it to them, believe it or not. I know.
I don't think so. Counsel Rose didn't want to give up any power.
Oh, interesting.
Both be having a debate with, would anybody else like to speak at the public forum? Please step to the mic and state your name and address.
Yes, John Glowick, forty-four Independence Lane, Shoesbury, Massachusetts. I'm the CEO of Prime Wellness Centers. I just want to say thank you very much to the Finance Committee and the Ways and Means Committee to allow us to be part of that interview process, which was quite lengthy, but I think very informational for both sides. to allow us to be part of that interview process, which was quite lengthy, but I think very informational for both sides. And I would like to just thank, you know, my team that was able to be here to address your questions. And I hope we answered them as best as we could and as honestly as we did. Thanks again and appreciate the, we look forward to working with the City of Leominster.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak at the public forum? And once again, would anybody else like to speak at the public forum? And for the third and final time, would anybody else like to speak at the public forum? Seeing none, I declare the public forum closed. And the council will now stand back in recess and we will move into communications, beginning with C-9, Madam Clerk.
C-9 relative to the appropriation of $198,910 to the various department salary and wages account seem to be raised by fiscal year 2017 revenue.
And C-9 will be referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar. Regular course, please.
Okay, C-9 has been given regular course. C-10.
C-10 relative to the appropriation of $94,613 to the various department salary and wages account seem to be transferred from the collective bargaining expenses prior year account.
C-10 will be referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Regular course, Mr. President.
C-10 has been given regular course. C-11.
C-11 relative to the appropriation of $8,725 to the Water Department salary and wages account seem to be transferred from the Water Department Support Services expense account.
Okay, C-11 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Yes, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
C-11 has been given regular course. C-12.
C-12 relative to the appropriation of $8,560 to the wastewater salary and wages account seem to be transferred from the wastewater support services expense account.
C-12 is also referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Regular course, please.
C-12 has been given regular course. C-13.
C-13 relative to the appropriation of $4,197 to the Water Department salary and wages account seem to be transferred from the Water Department Support Services expense prior year account.
C-13 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
And that will be regular course as well, Mr. President.
Okay, C-13 has been given regular course. C-14.
C-14 relative to the appropriation of $4,189 to the wastewater salary and wages account seem to be transferred from the wastewater support services prior year expense account.
C-14 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Yes, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
C-14 has been given regular course. C-15.
C-15, I have a letter here from the mayor's office asking us to change the wording on this that it should be coming from the stabilization fund, so I'm going to read it correctly into the record. C-15 relative to the appropriation of $15,900 to the rubbish removal expense account seem to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
C-15 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Yes, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
C-15 has been given regular course. C-16.
C-16 relative to the appropriation of $12,000 to the Fire Department expense account seem to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
C-16 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Yes, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
C-16 has been given regular course. Moving on to petitions, 6-17.
6-17, Best Buy Stewards LP number 1433. Renew the second-hand dealer's license for the location at 33 Orchard Hill Park Drive.
6-17 is being referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Yes, Mr. President. First time on the agenda, regular course. And there was a request from Counsel Lantiani that perhaps a representative from Best Buy could come down for our next meeting and talk about their policy, because there were some questions in the past about it.
Okay. So 6-17 will be given regular course and the clerk will send them a letter as well.
Thank you.
7-17.
7-17, National Grid, Manchester Street. Installed one singly owned pole beginning at a point approximately 107 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Colburn Street.
And 7-17 will be referred to the Chairman of Public Service.
Yes, Mr. President. It's been given regular course. We need to establish a hearing date. That date will be August 22nd, 2016 at 7:05 PM. Move for adoption of the hearing date.
Okay, 7-17 has been given regular course with a hearing on August 22nd of 2016 at 7:05 PM. And just a note, anybody that noticed on the agenda, there was a mistake there. It was not Ways and Means. It is going to Public Service. 8-17, Madam Clerk.
8-17, National Grid, Leominster Connector. Relocate one singly owned pole at the intersection of Mechanic Street to the west approximately 30 feet.
And this one as well, there was a misprint. This is going to Public Service.
Okay, Mr. President. At this point, again, regular course. And we need to establish a hearing date of August 22nd, 2016 at 7:10 PM. Move for adoption of the hearing date.
Okay, so 8-17 will also be given regular course with a hearing date of August 22nd, 2016 at 7:10 PM. Moving on to appointments.
Appointments, Council on Aging Terms to expire 4/15/2019. Donna S. Smith, Phyllis Gagnon.
And these appointments will be referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Yes, Mr. President. First time on the agenda, regular course with interviews for both candidates at the next meeting.
Okay, and these appointments have been given regular course. And we will set up interviews with these candidates at the next meeting. Moving on to matters before the City Council under Ways and Means. 67-16, Madam Chairwoman, are you ready to report?
Yes, I am, Mr. President. This petition had been given further time. There was a concern through the Treasurer's Office, but that has been clarified. So my, this is clear through the Police Department. We also referred it to the Treasurer's Office. So my recommendation would be to grant this license, the renewal of this license.
Okay, and Counsel Marchand, you in agreement? And Counsel Lantiani, are you in agreement as well?
I concur.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant 67-16. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 67-16, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, 67-16 has been granted. 69-16.
Yes, Mr. President. 69-16, Andrew Rome for Classics Pub. Approved the license for one pool table at 285 Central Street. We had sent out for recommendations from the Police Department, the Treasurer's Office, and the License Commission. Mr. Rome, I believe, did appear before the License Commission tonight. And the License Commission has given me a letter that they are in favor of his petition. So my recommendation would be to approve the license for the pool table.
Okay, Counsel Marchand.
Concur.
Counsel Lantiani?
Yeah.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant 69-16. Is there any discussion? Counsel Afrida?
I just want to expound a little bit on what Mr. Rome was saying tonight. We had this discussion two weeks ago. We send recommendation, send for recommendation to the License Commission usually just to see that they've had no issue with any type of fighting or any type of issue that would affect their license. There was no reason to be holding this up two weeks ago. Mr. Rome's absolutely right. Three months away for a pool table license when he's got numerous licenses and didn't have an issue. Shouldn't have to pay that kind of money. It's my understanding from a couple of people that spoke to me about it was that they were ready to start a pool league, which is pretty popular, I guess. And they couldn't start it because they had no license. So maybe we need to be more careful. Recommendation to these other boards and commissions, they have no authority. And we don't hear back or they ask us to do something particular that we're sure it's the right thing to do. Because we are holding people up on some of these things.
Counsel Marchand, did I see your hand as well?
Yeah, thank you. I think it's just the protocol. It's like a broken arrow. It just doesn't make sense. You know, this is, this is not anything new. It's the protocol. And it just does not make any sense at all. You know, this should be streamlined. The License Commission should be handling it. The application should go there. They have a track record with the License Commission. If the License Commission needs to refer out to the Police Department, the Treasurer's Office, they can do that. What happens is once it comes down here, it becomes boggled down. It just becomes boggled down. So I think it's incumbent upon us to fix it and make sure it doesn't happen again. So along with, you know, along with supporting each one of these this evening, I think I will, you know, at the end of the meeting of the new business, I would like to propose that we have the city solicitor send down how we can actually get rid of this situation and then, you know, put it in ordinance form and then change it. Thank you.
All right, is there any other discussion under 69-16? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 69-16, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, 69-16 has been granted. Moving on to 70-16.
70-16, Mr. President, Josh Longton for Ryan Time. Approved the license for one pool table at 14 Monument Square. Similarly, we had asked for recommendations from the Treasurer's Office, the Police Department, and the License Commission. The License Committee, Treasurer and Police were fine. The License Commission did hear their petition tonight and were in favor of petition 70-16. And I do want to add that I will support the Counselor from War Two's recommendation that we look to Copeland Page for some assistance. Because since I've been the Chairwoman of Ways and Means, pool tables have given me the most bits. So I would be more than happy to look into another, another process.
Okay.
So my recommendation is to approve the license.
Counsel Marchand. Thank you.
Counsel Lantiani, you in agreement?
I concur.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant 70-16. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 70-16, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, 70-16 has been granted. Moving on to Ways and Means and Legal Affairs, 53-16.
Mr. President, I mean, I'd ask you to either do 54-16 first or last solely because I have a conflict with the other two.
Okay, all right.
Whatever your pleasure is.
I'll do that one. I'll do 54-16 last then.
Last, okay.
Okay, so at this time, I'll refer 53-16 to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Yes, Mr. President. 53-16, Peter Campabasso, Esquire for Alternative Therapies Group, Inc. Request a local letter of non-opposition to locate a registered marijuana dispensary in the city of Leominster. We have a joint subcommittee meeting of Ways and Means and Legal Affairs scheduled for August 10th. So I would again give this petition further time.
Okay. Counsel Marchand, you all set?
Thank you.
Counsel Lantiani?
I concur.
Okay, now I'll check with the Chairwoman of the legal...
Row the town.
Okay, further time. So you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means and Legal Affairs Committee to give 53-16 further time. Is there any discussion?
Is there a possibility we can move this to the ninth?
Tomorrow night?
Tomorrow.
We can't post that in time.
Yeah.
It's tomorrow night.
Okay.
It's on the time.
Okay, is there, is there any further discussion on 53-16? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving 53-16 further time, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to zero, 53-16 has been given further time. Moving on to 65-16.
Yes, Mr. President. 65-16, Pat Scorzelli, Agent for Prime Wellness Centers, Inc. Request a local letter of municipal support and non-opposition for the citing and establishment of a registered medical marijuana dispensary in the city of Leominster on Locke Drive. Again, we will be having a Ways and, joint subcommittee meeting of Ways and Means and Legal Affairs on August 10th. And I do want to mention that at the hearing, and this would be 53-16 as well, is scheduled for 5:30 PM.
Okay.
So my recommendation would be to again, again, give this petition further time.
Okay, Counsel Marchand.
Maybe the next time we design protocol, we should have the applicants give us a letter of non-opposition in case they don't get the deal.
And a letter of support, too.
Is there no?
A letter of support would only be helpful.
I'm on board with that.
You're all set with further time?
Yeah.
Okay, Counsel Lantiani? Counsel Afrida from Legal Affairs, you're all set with further time? Okay, so you've heard the recommendation of the Ways and Means and Legal Affairs Committees to give 65-16 further time. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving further time, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to zero, 65-16 has been given further time. Moving on to 54-16.
54-16, Mr. President, Edward J. Bartlett, Jr., CFO for Middlesex Integrative Medicine. Request a letter of support or non-opposition to operate a registered marijuana dispensary at 25 Mohawk Drive. Before I make my recommendation, I would like to note that I think we have a little housekeeping to do on 54-16. Middlesex Integrative Medicine, from all of my readings and reports and from a phone call that I placed to Mr. Bartlett, is asking for a letter of non-opposition or support for a registered marijuana cultivation site, not dispensary. I believe this is an era of some kind. I don't know where it, the genesis of it was, but... So we need to amend this petition.
Okay.
So just a moment.
No, that was originally the...
Mr. President, I'll move, I'll move to amend the petition to reference a cultivation site rather than a dispensary.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, so all those in favor of amending 54-16 to read cultivation site and replace that with marijuana dispensary, please, is there any discussion first? Please signify in the usual manner if you're in favor. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, 54-16, that wording has been amended. So Madam Chairwoman, do you have a recommendation?
I do. We will be having a joint subcommittee meeting of Ways and Means and Legal Affairs on August 10th at 5:30 PM. So I would give this petition further time.
Okay, and Counsel...
I concur, thank you.
Counsel Lantiani?
I concur.
Okay, I will now go to Ways and Means, I'm sorry, Legal Affairs. You all set with this as well?
Yeah, I mean, I personally would be ready to go forward tonight, but I understand the, I understand the concern. So further time is fine.
Okay, Counsel Afrida, you as well? Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means and Legal Affairs Committees to give 54-16 further time. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of further time, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, 54-16 has been given further time. Moving on to Legal Affairs, Petition 1-17.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Petition 1-17, President's Committee on City Ordinance Review. Request that Chapter 14, Section 14-8 be deleted and replaced with a new section, 14-8, entitled Noise Control Ordinance. I, my inclination is that to schedule a subcommittee meeting on this and report back to the full council. But I, I'll call my fellow members, Shoah Safrida, Al-Samashian.
I'm ready to move tonight, but that's fine.
Okay, and then, so the recommendation would be further time. And perhaps, Mr. President, you can inquire of the, of the committee to elaborate a little bit
Okay.
after the discussion.
Sure. Okay, so you've heard the recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to give 1-17 further time. Is there any discussion? Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yeah, thank you very much. We, the President's Committee on Ordinance Review is comprised of myself, Counsel Badanza, and Counsel Feckley. And we've been meeting over the last several months, looking at some of the ordinances that we know are problematic or outdated. And this particular one, we had gone through a lengthy review of it. And we did get a positive response from the police chief. We do have comments. We worked with the health director and then he came back to us with some new comments. And so what I would actually like to do is to table this because we will not be able to have a subcommittee meeting amongst ourselves before our next meeting. So my recommendation would actually be to table this particular one. We'll definitely bring it back, but it probably will be in early September.
Okay, Counsel Dombrowski?
Yeah, I certainly don't mind doing that.
Okay, all right. Counsel Afrida, you okay with that, changing that recommendation? Counsel Marchand as well?
Concur, sure.
Okay, all right, so the recommendation of 1-17 then will be to table our first study. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of tabling for study 1-17, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, 1-17 has been tabled for study. Moving on to 2-17.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition 2-17, President's Committee on City Ordinance Review. Request that Chapter 3, Section 3-2, entitled Injurious Noise Prohibited, be deleted and replaced with the following. Quote, "No person, partnership, company, corporation, or association leasing or controlling any device or property shall willfully, negligently, or through failure to provide effective, available, controlled technology shall allow the creation of noise that will cause injury, fatigue, interference..." interference with the quiet enjoyment of life and property. My inclination on this particular where it's, you know, dealing with, with noise, which is always an issue, is to take this in the Subcommittee and report back to the full Council. So I would, I would ask for further time, but I'll poll my Committee, Counsel Frida and Counsel Marshand.
Sure.
Can you table it and discontinue the other?
Well, I, I'll, I mean, I'll defer, you know, during discussion, we can always change it like last night.
Okay, alright, so you've heard the recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to give two dash seventeen further time, is there any discussion? Counsel Shafazefer.
I, I think that we could proceed with this one, I mean, it's, it's very straightforward, it's really relatively simple. We do have positive recommendations back from the Police Chief and the Health Director, and those are the two enforcing agents. So, you know, I'm happy to meet with the Legal Affairs, you know, for Subcommittee meeting, and I would rather not table this one, it's just, it's, it's much more straightforward.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Counsel Vedanta.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, I think this is just rewording of an existing section.
Exactly.
It's similar, I mean, it's similar import, it's just a different, different language. And the only other thing I would say is I think we have an extra shell on that, we might want to clean up at that time, but I agree, I think we can, we can move forward with this part.
Okay, is there any, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving two dash seventeen further time, please signify in the usual manner.
One second, please.
Oh, sure.
You want to move forward tonight and have a discussion on it, or you want to bring this into Subcommittee? If I may, through the chair.
Sure.
I mean, I would be happy to just move this along this evening, I don't think that there are any questions that, I think as Counsel Vedanta just stated, it really was just a rewording.
Right.
And it was, the language came specifically from our Health Director.
So I'll ask, you know, through the chair and the Chairman of Legal Affairs for reconsideration or further time, and it sounds like, I'd be in favor of granting it, and then we could take it from there, you know?
I, my, my personal feeling is, is I'd like to take it into Subcommittee, because I've already, you know, been, been asked numerous questions about it, and I'd just like to be able to answer questions properly. So that's my feeling, if you guys want to vote me.
I respect that, I respect it through the chair.
I agree.
Alright, okay, so the recommendation for further time will still stand. Is there any, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting further time for two dash seventeen, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, two dash seventeen has been given further time. Moving on to three dash seventeen.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I believe that I would need to excuse myself from three dash seventeen, since I'm a member of the Disabilities Commission, and the Disabilities Commission gets fifty percent of the parking, handicapped parking fines.
Okay, so the record will reflect that you are abstaining? And I will refer, Counsel Dombrowski, you ready to report?
Yes, Petition three seventeen, President's Committee on Cities Ordinance Review, request that Chapter thirteen, Section thirteen dash thirty-three, entitled Schedule of Parking Fines, Group E, Number twenty-two, Relative to the Handicapped Parking Zone, be amended to increase the fine for parking in a handicapped zone to two hundred dollars. I would ask, did we get any recommendations back? That's because I did not, I didn't see.
I don't even see any, but I don't mean anything.
May I?
Yeah, sure.
Through the chair, during our Subcommittee meetings, we did refer this to the Police Department, and interim Police Chief Goldman supported the change from one hundred to two hundred dollars. So we do have that.
Okay.
And there is, and there is, sorry, a recommendation here?
Okay.
From the police.
And one other note, the Disabilities Commission also unanimously approved that change.
Okay, alright, well, given those circumstances, I, I think it's a worthy petition, and I'd, I'd be inclined to grant it this evening.
Okay. Counsel Frida, would you like to weigh in? You're in favor of granting as well?
Yeah.
Okay, Counsel Marshand, okay. So you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant three dash seventeen, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting three dash seventeen, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, three dash seventeen has been granted. Moving on to four dash seventeen.
Yes, Petition four seventeen, Mr. President, President's Committee on City Ordinance Review, request that Chapter ten, Solicitors, Hawkers, and Peddlers, Section ten dash two, entitled Definitions, be revised to add, the foregoing definition shall not include political campaigning. And again, do we have recommendations back on that? Because I didn't see those.
It wasn't referred out to anyone.
This wasn't referred out?
Was not, correct, was not referred out.
Okay. I, I don't have a problem with it, I'd be in favor of granting.
I would like to see a go, in the discussion, we have a meet Subcommittee meeting.
Okay, that's fine, too.
Just because I think it's a sensitive issue.
Okay, I'm supportive of that. Counsel Marshand.
I'll concur.
Alright, so the recommendation would be further time, and we'll have a Subcommittee meeting.
Sure, okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to give four dash seventeen further time, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving four dash seventeen further time, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, four dash seventeen has been given further time. Moving on to the City of Leominster's financial report, is the Chairman of Finance ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. We began the year with fourteen million, one thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifteen cents in the stabilization fund. We have pending three appropriations, one before us this evening, and two on the calendar for the first time. Those total thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars. If all approved, they would leave a balance in the stabilization fund of thirteen million, nine hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifteen cents.
Okay, is there any questions or comments about the financial report? Seeing none, we will move on to items under finance, C dash three, Mr. Chairman, you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, this was approved by us on our meeting at the twenty-fifth. As an emergency preamble, the Charter requires a ratification vote. Would be my recommendation to, would be my recommendation to recommend a ratification. I'll check with the members of my Committee.
Okay.
So the unanimous recommendation of finance is to ratify C dash three.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to ratify C dash three, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of ratifying C dash three, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, C dash three has been ratified. Moving on to C dash four.
C dash four, relative to the appropriation of ten thousand dollars to the Police Private Details Fund, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This relates to a cash flow issue with the Police Detail Account. Takes some time, often for private contractors to pay their bills, and sometimes the police have to wait for an inordinate period of time. Theory here is to provide some cash flow elasticity to this fund and let the police get paid a little sooner. Theoretically, we have all this money back when all of the contractors pay their bills. Would be my recommendation to grant C dash four.
Okay, Counsel Shafazefer.
I agree.
Okay, and Counsel Nicol.
I'm in agreement.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash four, is there any discussion? Counsel Frida.
I don't have a problem supporting this, but I don't think it's a good idea that we're basically telling everybody they can take more time because the police are going to get paid by us. I think that could present a problem that's been there for a long time anyway. I think there needs to be more encouragement, you know, from these companies that come in and get licenses through the building department. You know, they have to be paying, they got so many days to pay the police or details, or they can't do any more work. I mean, there's got to be a way to look at this, we shouldn't have to be paying them. Most communities don't have the money to pay it, just because we have it.
I don't disagree, I don't disagree.
Okay, is there any, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C dash four, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, C dash four has been granted, does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, order that the sum of ten thousand dollars be appropriated to the Police Private Details Fund, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Okay, you've heard the request for the adoption of the order, all those in favor of adopting the order, please signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, C dash four has been adopted. C dash five.
C dash five, relative to the appropriation of thirty thousand dollars to the Police Department Salary and Wages Account, same to be raised from fiscal year two thousand and seventeen revenue. This relates to a contract that was arrived at with the Police Dispatches Union, this money is necessary to fund the two thousand and seventeen fiscal year costs of that contract. My recommendation would be to grant.
Okay, Counsel Shafazefer.
Agreed.
Counsel Nicol.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash five, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C dash five, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, C dash five has been granted, does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, order that the sum of thirty thousand dollars be appropriated to the Police Department Salary and Wages Account, same to be raised from the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen revenue, move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order, all those in favor of adopting the order, please signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, C dash five has been adopted. C dash six.
Yes, Mr. President, C six, relative to the appropriation of twelve thousand dollars to the Police Department Salary and Wages Prior Year Account, same to be transferred from the Collective Bargaining Expense Account, prior year account. This money relates to implementing, again, the Dispatches Union settlement. In this particular instance, this communication deals with the costs of the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, and this money has already been appropriated in the prior fiscal year, two thousand and sixteen fiscal year account, and that fund, that count is being tapped to pay those expenses, it would be my position to grant C six, I'll check with my Committee.
I agree.
Okay, Counsel Nicol.
Agreed.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash six, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C dash six, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, C dash six has been granted, does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, order that the sum of twelve thousand dollars be appropriated to the Police Department Salary and Wages Prior Year Account, same to be transferred from the Collective Bargaining Expense Account, prior year account, move for the adoption of the order.
Okay, you've heard the request for the adoption of the order, all those in favor of adopting the order, please signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, C dash six has been adopted. C dash seven.
C dash seven, relative to the appropriation of forty-eight thousand dollars to the Police Department Salary and Wages Account, same to be raised by fiscal year two thousand and seventeen revenue. This is another contract settlement, in this particular case, is the Superior Officers Union, and this money is necessary to implement that contract for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen. It would be my position to grant C dash seven.
Counsel Shafazefer.
I agree.
Counsel Nicol.
Agreed.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash seven, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C dash seven, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, C dash seven has been granted, does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, order that the sum of forty-eight thousand dollars be appropriated to the Police Department Salary and Wages Account, same to be raised from fiscal two thousand and seventeen revenue, move for the adoption of the order.
Okay, you've heard the request for the adoption of the order, all those in favor of adopting the order, please signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, C dash seven has been adopted. C dash eight.
Yes, Mr. President, C eight, relative to the appropriation of thirty thousand dollars to the Police Department Salary and Wages Account, prior year expenses, same to be transferred from the Collective Bargaining Expense, prior year expense account. This is the corollary to the Superior Officers Union relating to fiscal year two thousand and sixteen. Once again, these funds are coming from an account that was set aside from fiscal two thousand and sixteen revenues, and it's used to defray or meet the expenses of the contract that relate to fiscal year two thousand and sixteen. It would be my position to grant.
Okay, Counsel Shafazefer, you in accord?
I am.
Counsel Nicol.
I am.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash eight, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C dash eight, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, C dash eight has been granted, does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, order that the sum of thirty thousand dollars be appropriated to the Police Department Salary and Wages Account, prior year expenses, same to be transferred from Collective Bargaining Expense, prior year expense account, move for the adoption of the order.
Okay, you've heard the request for the adoption of the order, all those in favor of adopting the order, please signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, C dash eight has been adopted. Moving on to Public Safety and Traffic, five dash seventeen. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, recommendation is to grant this coming from Officer Shay, and there was no need to send it to the Police Department, being requested by the Police Department, and when you read the reason for putting a stop sign, it's very, very plain and clear, so recommendation is to grant.
Okay, and also on Public Safety and Traffic is Counselist Nicol, Frida, Feckley, and Marshand, is there any objection to granting?
No.
No objection.
Okay, hearing none, the unanimous recommendation of the Public Safety and Traffic Committee will be to grant five dash seventeen, is there any discussion? Counsel Marshand.
Thank Officer Shay for bringing this to our attention, it is the worst entrance onto Mary Maeve, and probably the entire neighborhood. It's just a really tough spot, so it's a good advisory sign for the, to the people, and especially the residents that are in the tenancy there, the tenement.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting five dash seventeen, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, five dash seventeen has been granted. Moving on to appointments, is the Chairwoman of Ways and Means ready to report?
I am, Mr. President, the appointments of the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen election workers, terms to expire August thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. The City Council was supplied by the list by ward and precinct of all of the workers, the wardens, the clerks, inspectors, et cetera, for upcoming elections, and this was given regular course, and during the course of the two weeks, I have had no information that would indicate that we should not appoint the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen election workers.
Okay, so you're in favor of granting?
Yes, I am.
Counsel Marshand.
Concur.
Counsel Lancia.
I concur.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to confirm or appoint the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen election workers, their terms to expire August thirty-first of two thousand and seventeen, is there any, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of appointing, please signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, the election workers have been approved. Moving on to old business, we have a second reading of an ordinance.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes.
In the petition form, I abstained from this.
Okay.
I've done a lot of work with the petition over the years with the Downtown Association, as you know, and the festivals and everything else, but now it's in just a regular ordinance form. Do I remain abstaining at this level? To the clerk, maybe?
I mean, it.
Now it's, now it's an ordinance.
At this point, it's just a general ordinance for the entire city.
Back to you, the floor to the attorneys on the council, Counsel Dombrowski.
It's not going to benefit any one, any, any one person at this point.
Right.
I think, I think Counsel Marshand, you abstained from the first reading, so you probably want to be consistent.
Okay, alright, alright.
But I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, okay, okay.
It's probably safe.
Right, yeah, thank you.
Right, yeah. Okay, so the record will be reflecting that Counsel Marshand is going to abstain, so at this point, I will refer the second reading of an ordinance to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Second reading of an ordinance, amend Chapter twenty-two of the revised ordinances entitled zoning to amend Section twenty-two dash forty dot three, quote, table of dimensional regulations, to amend section twenty-two dash forty dot three, quote, table of dimensional regulations, end quote, so that the building height in the R.C. district with lots of at least five acres in area will have a maximum of forty feet in height. The recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation to adopt uh the second reading of this ordinance. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, uh we will do this in a roll call vote, uh beginning with Council. What's that?
Oh.
Just I agree with him, just for the record.
Oh, oh, sorry, I, I, I apologize. Um, so we will do this uh in a roll call vote, beginning with Council Frida.
Yea.
Council Dombrowski.
Yea.
Council Shalfo Zephyr.
Yea.
Council Feckley.
Yea.
Council Bedanza.
Yea.
Council Lanciani.
Yea.
Councilon Nicol.
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea, so by a vote of eight to zero, uh the second reading of an ordinance uh has been adopted. Uh, we have another second reading of an ordinance, and I will refer this one to the chairman of legal affairs as well.
Yes, thank you. Second reading of the ordinance, amend chapter twenty-two of the revised ordinances entitled zoning by changing the Leominster zoning map so that a twenty-one thousand eight hundred forty square foot parcel, more or less identified as assessors map three seventeen parcel seven A, is designated as located in zoning district residence C in parentheses, R.C. Uh, my recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance, and I would uh call my second member.
I do agree.
Recommendation, Mr. President, is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance.
Okay, so.
Mr. President, I'll abstain from this also.
Okay, and the record will reflect that Council Marchand is abstaining. So, you've heard the recommendation of the uh legal affairs committee to uh grant the second reading of this ordinance. Is there any discussion? Councilor Frida?
Yeah, I just wanna state that this was a part of a uh a very large project that took place over the past ten years. And uh Craig Amaral and Attorney Donovan um were very clear on being cooperative in finishing this project that had a, had a commitment to the neighborhood as well. And um, you know, they held their word. Uh, we held this up for a week or two, and they went by their word and are finishing up the project now. And it'll be done so that the search will be available to everybody, so just wanted to, to point out that they were very cooperative. Put the job down, stuck to their word.
Okay, thank you very much, Council Frida. Is there, is there any other discussion on this uh second reading of an ordinance? Seeing none, uh we will do this in a roll call manner to Grant, uh beginning with Council Frida.
Yea.
Councilor Dombrowski.
Yea.
Council Shalfo Zephyr.
Yea.
Council Feckley.
Yea.
Council Bedanza.
Yea.
Council Lanciani.
Yea.
Councilon Nicol.
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of eight to zero. The second reading of an ordinance has been adopted. Is there any other old business to come before the council? Seeing none, uh we will move on to new business, and we have several first readings of an ordinance. And the uh first one will be referred to the chairman of legal affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First reading of an ordinance, amend chapter sixteen, section thirty of the revised ordinances entitled compensation grades by inserting sections B eight, B nine, and B ten to increase salaries and wages of W one through W six by two percent effective July first, two thousand fifteen, two percent effective July first, two thousand sixteen, and two percent effective July first, two thousand seventeen relative to the Department of Public Works salaries. Uh, I note that this is uh, this is a product of negotiations between, with the mayor uh in this, these particular entities. But my recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance, and we need to schedule a hearing for August twenty-second, two thousand sixteen at six forty-five P.M. And I defer to Council Frida for her recommendation.
Okay.
I agree.
Concur.
Okay, so you've heard the recommendation of the legal affairs committee to adopt uh the first reading of this ordinance and to establish a hearing for August twenty-second of twenty sixteen at six forty-five P.M. Okay, all right, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, uh we will do this in a roll call manner, beginning with Council Frida.
Yea.
Council Dombrowski.
Yea.
Council Shalfo Zephyr.
Yea.
Council Feckley.
Yea.
Council Bedanza.
Yea.
Council Lanciani.
Yea.
Councilon Nicol.
Yea.
Council Marchand.
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. The first reading of this ordinance has been adopted, and I will refer the next reading of the first ordinance to the chairman of legal affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First reading of an ordinance, amend chapter sixteen, section thirty of the revised ordinances entitled compensation grades by adding schedule D in its entirety to increase salary and wages of S five through S eight by two percent effective July first, two thousand fifteen, two percent effective July first, two thousand sixteen, and two percent effective July first, two thousand seventeen relative to the middle managers' union. Uh, again, this is a, a result of uh negotiations and agreements between the mayor and the middle managers' union. Uh, my recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance, and I refer to my fellow members. Council Frida?
Yea, I agree.
Council Marchand?
Concur, thank you.
So, the recommendation, Mr. President, is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance and to schedule a hearing on the second reading for August twenty-second, two thousand sixteen at six fifty P.M.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the legal affairs committee to adopt the first reading of this ordinance and to uh establish a hearing on August twenty-second, twenty sixteen at six fifty P.M. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, uh we will once again do this in a roll call manner, beginning with Council Frida.
Yea.
Councilor Dombrowski.
Yea.
Council Shalfo Zephyr.
Yea.
Council Feckley.
Yea.
Council Bedanza.
Yea.
Council Lanciani.
Yea.
Councilon Nicol.
Yea.
Council Marchand.
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. The first reading of this ordinance has also been adopted. Moving on to the first reading of an ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First reading of an ordinance, amend chapter sixteen, section thirty of the revised ordinances entitled compensation grades by inserting sections A eight, A nine, and A ten to increase salaries and wages of S one through S ten by two point five percent effective July first, two thousand fifteen, two point five percent effective July first, two thousand sixteen, and two point five percent effective July first, two thousand seventeen relative to non-union employees. Uh, my recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. I refer to my committee members, Council Frida?
I agree.
Council Marchand?
Concur.
Okay.
Mr. President, we also need to, uh, we have an unanimous recommendation to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. We need to schedule, uh, also to schedule an August twenty-second, two thousand sixteen at six fifty-five P.M. for the second reading.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the legal affairs committee to adopt the first reading of this ordinance and to establish a hearing for the second reading on August twenty-second, twenty sixteen at six fifty-five P.M. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, uh we will do this in a roll call manner, beginning with Council Frida.
Yea.
Council Dombrowski.
Yea.
Council Shalfo Zephyr.
Yea.
Council Feckley.
Yea.
Council Bedanza.
Yea.
Council Lanciani.
Yea.
Councilon Nicol.
Yea.
Council Marchand.
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. The first reading of this uh ordinance has been adopted, and we have one more reading of our first ordinance. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. First reading of the ordinance, amend chapter sixteen, section thirty of the revised ordinances entitled compensation grades by deleting schedule C in its entirety, inserting a new schedule C to increase salary and wages of P one through P five by two percent effective July first, two thousand fifteen, two percent effective July first, two thousand sixteen, and two percent effective July first, two thousand seventeen relative to the Police Superior Officers' Union. Um, and similar to the previous uh ordinances, this is a result of negotiations between the mayor and the union. Uh, my recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. Council Frida?
Yep, I agree.
Council Marchand?
Concur.
Uh, unanimous recommendation to adopt the first reading of the ordinance and to schedule a hearing on the second reading of the ordinance for August twenty-second, two thousand sixteen at seven o'clock P.M.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the legal affairs committee to adopt uh the first reading of this ordinance and to establish a hearing on August twenty-second of twenty sixteen at seven P.M. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, uh we will do this in a roll call vote, beginning with Council Frida.
Yea.
Council Dombrowski.
Yea.
Council Shalfo Zephyr.
Yea.
Council Feckley.
Yea.
Council Bedanza.
Yea.
Council Lanciani.
Yea.
Councilon Nicol.
Yea.
Council Marchand.
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. The first reading of this ordinance has been adopted. Uh, is there any other new business to come before the council? Council, Councilor Dombrowski?
Yes, I need to uh schedule a subcommittee meeting on the new uh, new petitions, um, which would be two seven, petition two seventeen, and petition four seventeen. I'd like to do it, if, if my subcommittee is okay, before the next regularly scheduled council meeting. Um, I think it'll take about a half hour. I don't know if that can be done, how busy we are.
Uh, through the, through the chair to the um legal affairs chairperson, I won't be available. And I'd really like to be there for the discussions.
Oh, you won't?
I'm on vacation.
Oh, um, okay, uh, all right, why don't we? Let me see here. Should we do it for the following meeting?
Which is the twelfth?
Yeah.
Yeah.
September, I could, I can do that, September twelfth?
Well, that's our regular meeting. How about if we did a subcommittee on the seventh? Which is the one.
It's okay with me.
Oh, is that? Oh, that's the, the night before the primary.
Through the chair, might be a little tied up that night.
This should, this should be good to change your mi- mindset for a while.
Yeah, I could take you.
I'd love to be here.
Is the twelfth a holiday?
The twelfth, no.
No, September.
No, I think the fifth is.
Fifth is.
Fifth is.
My calendar's dark for some reason.
The twelfth is a meeting.
It'll match my mood.
So we.
Through the chair, what would happen if we did it on the sixth? Instead of a Wednesday, go to a Tuesday.
Yeah, sure.
It's fine with me.
It's fine with me.
It's okay. So, it's a Tuesday, September sixth, great.
At uh six o'clock, good for a while.
Yeah. What day in Chicago?
September sixth.
Tuesday.
Should be a good time.
Okay.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Thank you.
Okay, so that subcommittee's been established. Is there any other new business uh to come before the council? Uh, seeing none, uh is there anything under the community calendar? Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Mm-hmm. Um, we, I just wanted to announce that we are having our final Ginny's Hometown Movie Theater Night on Saturday evening, August twentieth. The um, the last one we had scheduled at the end of July, unfortunately, was the night of a pretty big storm. So, we couldn't, the, people could not put up the um, the inflatable movie screen. So, we had to, we were at Doyle Field, Locks Door Short, we had to just cancel that, unfortunately. But this, um, this will be a big, um, it'll be a nice um activity for families to all, you know, to come to uh right before school starts. So, again, Saturday evening, August twentieth, and you can check, um, check our Ginny's Facebook page for uh more details and for the uh movie announcement.
Okay, is there anything else? Councilor Lanciani?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to uh bring to uh my fellow councilors' attention that uh we have a great school system within the city of Leominster. We have a great band, Barry Hudson. Uh, the, what I went to uh this past Thursday, I believe it was, was the summer jazz camp uh show or whatever we wanted to call it up at the Leominster High School Auditorium. And I'll tell you, I was thoroughly impressed with these young students, the way they played jazz, the accompaniment that they had by uh fellow teachers and by uh musicians who were well-known within the community, the state, uh, the nation. And I, I was just awed. And it started at eleven o'clock and ended at uh twelve-thirty. And I'll tell you, I, I haven't stopped talking about it. Um, it was just simply fantastic. Mister Healy and his uh coworkers, other teachers and instructors, did one heck of a job. And next year, when they do this, please make a point to go. You'll enjoy it. It was simply fantastic. Thank you.
Thanks, thank, thank you very much. Is there anything else to come under the uh community calendar? Council Frida?
Yeah, just to reiterate, uh, on uh the jazz camp, uh Bob Landry's been doing that for years with uh Larry Zouaro and Bernie Masso, and it's incredible. And it, I think that um MTA has gotten behind it and supplied a lot of the shirts for the kids and just uh, the kids have a ball doing it as well. And it, it, the short time that they're there, they do an incredible job. Um, I also wanted to add, the uh Beer Fest, Greg Chapdolane really outdid himself the other night. It was um, it had to be a thousand people there, and it was just so well organized. I wasn't there last year 'cause I was on vacation, but everybody that was there that went last year said this year was just flawless outside of a rainstorm for a few minutes. But.
Yeah.
Um, it was just really well done and uh all under control.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, is there any, uh, any other things under the community calendar? I just have a, a couple here. Um, tomorrow, uh, August ninth is the, it looks like the last performance for the Colonial Band Concert Series at Carter Park in downtown Leominster. That's tomorrow evening. And also, um, on August eighteenth, from five to nine P.M., it's Ladies Night Out at Leominster City Hall and throughout the city. So, that's it. Is there any, anything else? Um, under the community calendar, no? All right, uh, we have one table petition upon which action is proposed, and it's under legal affairs. And uh, the chairman, I believe that you have to abstain from this, so I will give it to the clerk.
Thank you.
Council Frida?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I also wanna add that I missed the very first hearing, and so because of that, I can't take part in the rest of the public hearing process. So, I will be abstaining from this uh, these votes.
Okay, and Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Mm-hmm, I will be abstaining from uh this discussion as well.
Okay, all right, so Councilor Frida, I will ask you to handle thirty-six dash sixteen as the clerk of legal affairs.
I don't know, I think I wanna abstain as well. Recommendation, I'll go to member of my committee, um, is to take thirty-six dash sixteen off the table for action.
I concur.
Okay, so you've heard the recommendation of legal affairs committee to take thirty-six dash sixteen off the table for action. All those in favor, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of six to zero, thirty-six dash sixteen has been taken off the table for action. Councilor Frida, I will refer this back to Council Frida.
Thirty-six dash sixteen, Mackie Bosch for D.O. Health, Massachusetts, grant a special permit to open a medical marijuana cultivation and dispensary facility at Thirty Patriot Circle as shown on assessors map four ninety-nine, lot fifty. Um, the recommendation would be uh further time until uh August twenty-second meeting.
Okay.
I concur.
Okay, all right, so you've heard the recommendation of the legal affairs committee to give thirty-six dash sixteen further time. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving thirty-six dash sixteen further time, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of uh four to two, thirty-six dash sixteen has been given further time. If there's nothing else to uh come uh before the city council, I would ask for a, a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourn.
A second?
Second.
Okay, the council meeting for August eighth, twenty sixteen now stands uh adjourned. Thank you. Okay, the council meeting for August eighth, two thousand sixteen now stands, uh, adjourned. Thank you.